Does it matter? We were thinking, say, does it matter?
But it's a lot of, I, I don't care.
You're making a motion.
If you want it under business contract, contract or more of a company in contract, not something that you is obligated to.
It usually is.
Whatever. You want to enter a business contract, I will say six. Or six.
Six A. Second to that. Put a favor added into the agenda, please signify by saying one. Post nay, it's added. Are there any other additions? And just the agenda? Now, if there's a favor of adopting the agenda as amended, please signify by saying aye. Post nay. Then item three, approval of meeting of September ninth, twenty twenty five. Motion made. Is there a second? Is there any error or omissions in the minutes presented? Are there none? Those, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Post nay. I have it. Then item four, public remarks. Is there anyone at this time who would, sorry to make public remarks or comments? Now. Please, say you need. Rest your record.
Hi, sound is a four oh one four seven, Paul Sisser Avenue. I have a question for the board. I understand, I was at the, I think it's the WSP C A meeting where the engineer was talking about the sewers being expanded upon, that there was in the town charter, a requirement that if someone is along the route where a sewer is, that their septic system were to fail, they are forced to pay into the system to, to get into the, the new sewer line. I find it hard to believe that the town charter would be that detailed to deny citizens their own, who own their own property, deny them the right to say, no, I want to keep what I have. So I was wondering, maybe the town manager might know where in the town charter, something like that is located, because if we are by town charter permitting or disallowing our citizens to make private choices on their own property, then that opens up the door for the town to be able to basically do anything. You could put in salary caps. You could, you could force all sorts of things on people by, by decree. So I'm just wondering if that's.
I'm not aware of anything in the town charter that's.
Well, that's what was stated.
That was, I got that question from a bunch of people that were at the meeting. It was specifically stated in our charter, and I don't believe that that is correct.
I don't believe it is either. I don't look into it, but I really don't think that's the case, but thank you. Anyone else who would like to make public comment or remarks at this time? Darren?
Darren?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name is Darren Hearn, one eighty Tarsha Road. And I'd like to speak on the Board of Education Collective Bargain Agreement to be voted on tonight. I've had a chance to read through it. And as a business owner for almost thirty years, and it's had many employees, I cannot believe what this contract says and what is being asked for of the taxpayers with this agreement. I only had three minutes to talk, so I only hit the major topics. But to be clear, the list of wrongs in this agreement are much longer than what I'm going to bring up. First, this is a three-year contract that runs from July of twenty sixth to June of twenty nine. If passed, the taxpayers are stuck with this for three years. These administrators, which already get paid very high salaries, are guaranteed a three point one percent raise every year for those three years. That's between approximately five and six thousand dollar a year raise per administrator. Plus, they get longevity bonuses. They get tax shelter, annuity contributions of five to six thousand dollars a year. And the administrators' school with a summer school program gets an additional thirty five hundred dollar stipend. Aren't they already there? Aren't they already at work? I don't understand why they get an extra stipend. And remember, there's multiple admins in each of these school buildings. They want fifteen thousand dollar a year budget item for administrators to take advanced educational courses. So we're paying for them to get higher education, and then once they achieve that, they get an additional fifteen hundred dollar salary increase and step increases in their salaries. They also get seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for travel expenses. Each twelve-month administrator gets sixty-two days a year of paid time off. To break that down, that's fifty-two weeks times five days a week is two hundred and sixty working days a year. Minus out their fourteen holidays, five personal days, and ready for this, eighteen sick days and twenty-five vacation days. That's sixty-two days a year they get off with pay for twenty-five percent of their working year. Who else in the world would get this from their employer? It's completely ridiculous. This would put most businesses out of business. Additionally, because they have so many days off a year, they can bank their sick time up to two hundred and seventeen days. That means when they get close to retirement, they can take over a full working year off with pay before they retire. This is all in the backs of taxpayers of East Hampton that just voted down last year's Board of Education budget overwhelmingly. Not only do we have too many administrators, they're raking the taxpayers over the coals. This ridiculous must, ridiculousness must stop. These and all of the labor contracts with the Board of Ed are the reason the Board of Ed spending and budget is out of control. This town council truly is representing the people and taxpayers of East Hampton. Then the only vote you should have for this agreement should be no. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make public comment at this time? No one with a hand raised?
Cindy?
Yes. Can you hear me? Hello? Okay, um. There has been, the last meeting that I was at, I heard that the home road sewer pipeline was going to not happen. And there's been a lot of chatter that it has been reopened. And I really need to have clarity on this. Can someone let me know where we stand?
Home road is. That's not moving forward.
Cindy, can you hear?
It's not moving forward. It's in the W, it's in the minutes from W P C A from the last meeting.
Okay, so it's not moving forward.
Correct.
Okay. Good to hear. Thank you very much.
One other.
iPhone? Hello? Can you hear me? Hello? Oh, sorry. This is Rebecca Harvey, thirty-nine Flanders Road. I don't know if I have to tell you that. I just wanted to make a comment about the noise ordinance that I read. I want to say that I am one thousand percent on board for some type of verbiage in either land use or, you know, something to do with construction or anything along those lines. Heavy machinery, but reading this noise ordinance, I seriously feel like I'd be put into like a homeowners association type deal. It's kind of crazy and with our police department already saying that they are short-staffed and being, you know, stretched too thin. I think putting something like this on the books is going to stretch them even more thin, because it's going to be something where neighbors get upset with each other and it's just going to be used as like a tattling avenue for people. Sorry, I'm driving and trying to pay attention to two things, but I really like, I for one, hope that the council is not considering this as written and might take into consideration something a little bit, you know, better as far as like land use or certain construction permits. That's pretty much it. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, my thoughts started at seven, so I don't really have notes, so I'll try to make it quick and not sound like a crazy person. My name is Chris Patel. I live at fifteen Old Park Hill Road. I just wanted to comment following the last speaker on the noise ordinance. As written, I'm opposed to it. However, I understand the spirit of it. There's a lot of crazy, I'm relatively new to town. My wife's family's been here a very long time. There's crazy stuff on Long Crossing, on Lakewood. I completely understand the sentiment of commercial actions or commercial activity, construction and whatnot. My problem with the ordinance is, again, to echo the last speaker, is that it's written like it turns the entire town into an H L A. As I understand it, it says, anything that's audible, you can, you can audibly hear within a hundred feet is certainly a problem. Well, that's just about everything that bands, if you've got roosters, even if you have a lot of land and you have roosters. If you're firearm hunting on lawful firearms, hunting on private land. Connecticut State statute is very clear when it comes to firearms hunting. United is actually one of the safest states in the Union when it comes to accidents and whatnot, and it's five hundred feet from any dwelling of person or animal. You can still take a lawfully and safely, you know, be involved in firearms hunting on private land, and you're going to hear that shot from a long way. I don't think it's right that zoning enforcement or the police or something come to the house and that person gets a ticket for a lawful action that's been lawful for decades. The similar situation with chickens with roosters. There's something came up in the zoning commission. I personally oppose, I think a lot of to overregulation of things like this. The biggest problem with this, I see, is it, and I've heard this from other towns too, and and it kind of bothers me because I've heard it from different commissions and boards in this town. Is people say, well, only if there's an issue, we're going to enforce. And I don't like that because then it's like, okay, we're going to have all of these regulations. And we're going to wait till whether it's a police officer or it's a zoning regulation. And this isn't against the East Hampton Police or any town staff at all. When you put a position where a system of government, in my opinion, can kind of pick and choose what they want to enforce, it kind of leaves it up to, you know, corruption, politically motivated situations on all sides, on whatever side, and I just don't think that's a right. So again, I completely understand the sentiment of this materials processing. This idea of a pile driver coming from an excavator and breaking apart some granite, like something out of Avatar is insane. However, the guy with the rooster and doing stuff on his own land that he pays taxes for that he's been doing for years, I don't think that that should be outlawed. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, there was one, but it seems to have dropped off.
Is, is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to make public comment at this time? If not, we belong in the agenda.
Hey, everyone. What do you know? Steve Motto, Dream Developers, Ten Year Water Circle. I hear this noise orders activity, I know was brought up in two thousand and eleven. The council had to do with restaurant, had to do with angelos at the time. I mean, we, the council, you know, simply put it that down time because it was set under state statute, but it was all in state statute at that time. I just wanted, I mean, we're only in the process of this noise order, and so I just wanted to educate. I am in the construction business. I do a lot of process thing. It's part of the development process. Rock hammering is very instrumental to what we do as a living. I think there should be guardrails on it. I don't oppose guardrails. You know, it's part of business. But rock hammering also can be used on a single-family lot without pressure. I probably built ten custom homes in town that relied on blasting and just hammering. Let's not make any mistake. We have to make a certain margin in our business to survive. If I have to, if I take on an expense, because, you know, you know, we get restricted to four hours a day on a hammer, but I only have eight hours of work, I have to pass that expense on to the home. So it's not hurting the developer by doing that. It's hurting the end user. The end people are going to live in those houses that are going to bring businesses to this town and basically use our, our assets like Ace Hardware, Paul's and Sandy's. If you look at Laurel Ridge, I blasted and crushed and basically processed all that material, put the road in. I had no complaints. I had no, nobody, nobody, no, no written warnings or anything like that. We did George Mantecas' building. That was full blasting, processing, hammered. We did first phase of Edgewater. We did this very town hall. We spent four weeks crushing and hammering here. Now, I agree, there's times that are adequate to be doing that. You can't be doing it five in the morning. You can't be doing it seven at night. But I think, you know, during that type of stuff, you've set some limitations between seven and five or eight and five or seven and four. I think that would kind of like meet in the middle, you know? I just think there has to be a happy meeting in there because it's a, if you put those type of restrictions, what you're going to see in town is you're going to start seeing bad development. You're going to start seeing rocks and property lines sipping out boulders and stuff. You know, people aren't going to pay the money to, or extra money to be able to try to develop their problems. And actually, they're going to start seeing, it's going to start looking like the moon, and you see it that I think we have a couple of those streets. I think down on Daniel Street, we have a couple of situations now. But that's kind of what I wanted to say. I've been hearing a lot about it. I've been sharing my thoughts with some of you, with some of the people on council, on zoning. But I think there has to be a happy meeting in there. And it goes with, I've heard all about the chickens and the roosters, and I can, I think it all falls in the same category. So that's all I have to say. Appreciate your time.
Steve, if that's going to be part of the public hearing on the whole matter.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to educate and say it's not all about just rock processing for one development. And I think there's some, I think there's some animosity on that particular deal. And like I said, I've been developing a town since two thousand and three. And I've never had a complaint, and all my developments involved was rock hammering, crushing and processing through the roads, not to sell the material, but to be able to develop correctly. Unfortunately, our town is all rock.
You do have one more.
Brian?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Hey, thanks for, let me talk. This is Brian Turner, forty-two Spice Hill Drive. Just real quick, the audio on the Zoom meeting is pretty horrible. It's almost impossible to hear any of you, and it's been liked out the last two meetings. Just some constructive feedback. I just want to talk about a couple of quick things. One, the, the noise ordinance. At first, I thought it was a good idea, and I read through it, and like a lot of other folks have already said, it, it kind of seems a little over the top. And it also seems like a way that you might be able to weaponize the police department against your neighbor if you got a gripe against them. I think neighbors should be able to talk to each other and, and kind of deal with things at the lowest level. And if they can't, there's already laws in place to deal with that. So I think it's overkill. I think it's unnecessary, especially in the format that it currently is in. On another topic, I went ahead and read your packet, and I see that there's a second proposal that you're going to talk about later regarding the Firehouse Steering Committee. The second version looks like a watered-down and kind of a cheap knockoff of the first one. I'm not really sure what the point of that is. And I did notice a couple of things in there. It tries to put three town council seats on the committee. That kind of makes it so it's pretty hard to have a politically balanced committee. I'm not sure what the point of that is. It also has a caveat in there that if you get, if you're not no longer in your town council seat, you get to stay on the committee. And that seems like a way of kind of bypassing an election to me. I, I certainly hope you don't staff whatever committee you guys agree to do until after the election, rather than having a false start and having to replace somebody or keep somebody on, because in theory, you could have three seats that are put earmarked for the town council with three people that no longer have a town council seat, and then you remove the town council from its own committee, which seems kind of foolish. And then the other thing I wanted to talk about real quick is I noticed that you're going to recognize J T Lemmer as an Eagle Scout. And I want to congratulate J T and his family. He's a great kid. I was his Cub Scout leader a million years ago. I'm very proud of him and his family, and I wish them well, and I'm glad you guys are recognizing them tonight. Thank you for doing that. Have a great night.
Anyone else? Now, move on to the agenda. Item five, presentations. Presentation from the Clean Energy Task Force on electric vehicle charging stations from Voltposts.
I'm going to invite Searls from the Commission and others up to make that presentation from the task force.
Presentation. Good evening, council members, residents. Thanks, thank you. My name is John Searl. I serve on East Hampton's Clean Energy Task Force. Thank you for the opportunity to present this resolution tonight in support of installing electric vehicles at no cost to the town. Exciting. We are seeing clear momentum in E V adoption across Connecticut. As of July first, twenty twenty five, there are almost sixty thousand electric vehicles registered in the state. And that's an increase of nearly twelve percent since January of this year alone. In East Hampton in particular, there are now two hundred and forty-four registered electric vehicles, indicating that our town has been on the upward trend of that, part of that upward trend. And as such, we are positioned to benefit from enhanced charging infrastructure, both to support existing E V drivers and to serve those who may be considering switching over. Tonight, we are introducing a resolution that would allow a company called Voltposts in conjunction with state regulators to install E V chargers in strategic locations around town. James Everly of Voltposts is going to join us virtually in a moment to explain how the Voltposts program works, how the sites are selected, the costs that are involved, how maintenance and operations are handled, and the expected benefits. And before I turn over to James, just want to say that this proposal aligns with East Hampton's goals around clean energy, reduced emissions, and increased access. Having publicly available charging stations helps remove a barrier to E V adoption, supports economic development, and can improve equity, especially for residents who can't install chargers at home. With that, I'm going to hand it off to James Everly of Voltposts to walk us through the details. James?
Thank you. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay. Yep, happy to be here and support the project. Perhaps if we go to the first slide. Yep, so Pure has basically procured a number of projects around Connecticut, looking at various sort of clean energy initiatives. One such project was E V charging. They procured forty to sixty of our Voltposts chargers, which utilize existing infrastructure, typically light poles or possibly the wooden utility poles. This project in particular is only focused on, on light poles, whether they are curbside or in parking lots. So as part of the procurement that they have done, they basically have procured these chargers. And then they are able to be utilized anywhere in the state of Connecticut. We, over the last few months, have been doing a number of outreach activities. We now have something in the region of sixteen municipalities that are basically signed up have registered their interest with us in having these chargers. The specific split is that eighty percent will go into Eversource, that's the larger territory, and twenty percent in United Illuminating. If we go to the next slide. So the charger itself is, is fairly in, in, in. So I'm just trying not to laugh at the image in the middle there of the three chargers. Something, something's gone wrong to make it look a little bit squashed. But it's an innovative solution. It mounts about ten foot on the pole. And the advantage of this is it makes it more resistant to sort of vandalism. It's hard to get access to it. And there's a Q R code. There's a normal height. Upon activation, the cable will lower down to an A D A compliant height. You can then charge your vehicle. Once the vehicle has finished charging, it's unplugged. As soon as it's unplugged, the cable will retract back up into its housing, so there's no cable left lying on the footway or parking lot. If we go to the next slide. A little bit about Voltposts. We have partnerships with Exelon, Zipcar, E T and T. We're currently at the, in the process of deploying across numerous states around the U S. And if we go to the next slide. So yeah, we can install on almost any pole type. Municipal parking lots, private lots, curbside. Any location that's suggested, we're happy to provide feedback. The only stipulation is that the poles cannot be owned by Eversource or U I for the purposes of this project. And then I think there's one more slide. So yeah, basically, at this stage, we are finishing gathering registrations of interest. This is possibly the very last meeting that we are holding with people in Connecticut. And yeah, to participate, we just need a suggested locations and sort of confirmation of support with the deployment process. The project itself covers the cost of the hardware, the installation, and the sort of ongoing maintenance and operations. It really is zero cost to the municipality. And in terms of the E V drivers, they will pay an indicative rate of around thirty-six cents per kilowatt hour, which is very competitive. And that money is basically helping to pay for the, the ongoing operation and maintenance of the charger. I think that's my section of the slides done.
Hey, thanks, James. I'm just going to ask Kathy to go advance the slides here. So you heard James talk about, you know, if this goes through, they would just need some input, some suggested locations. All the task forces are to come up with a couple of recommendations based on those stipulations you heard James mention. So you know, the metal lamp posts have to be owned by the town. And then just looking at the parking opportunities that we have around town and also high-traffic areas, right, where it makes the most sense. So we've identified two of those. You can see on the map there, we have East Hampton Town Hall right here, as well as the library. Both those places have, can need those requirements. We go to the next slide. So just a little bit closer view here. We identified the east side of the building here at the town hall, just as like probably the most opportunistic. We don't want it too front and center where it's going to be, you know, blocking or taking up space, you know, for a lot of people just coming and going, right? It's that somewhat you're there for a couple of hours maybe. So we thought the east side of the building. So we thought the east side of the building would be a good spot. Um, not only for people visiting the town hall, but also, uh, the, the folks at Edgewater Apartments, uh, and because that just borders right there. It's well lit, seems to be nice and safe. Uh, but of course, being residents in apartments, they don't have the option to install their own, own chargers. So that could be a really nice opportunity for them. And then the other, the second one, slide there please, uh, location at the library. We identified, uh, this spot in the rear. Are, there are, I believe, three light posts. We were thinking one of those first two. The one in the back feels maybe a little bit too in the back and out of the way for some people's safety. Um, I know I have an electric vehicle. I talked to my wife about it just to get a sense like, where would you be comfortable? And in the back just seems a little bit too off the beaten path there. So it's just a couple of places that we identified that we're just going to recommend going for it. But that's really our presentation. Um, just wanted to know if there are any questions, especially when we have James on the line still.
Question?
Um, a couple, actually a few questions. Um. You said this project is funded by PURA, correct? Yes, okay. But isn't PURA funded by the taxpayers? And from all of us through the public benefit charge and the public utility fee on our bills? And so isn't it really the taxpayers that are paying for this? Has the taxpayer paid for the one that's already down in the center account? You've got it. So that's great. Uh, next question. It was, um, stated at the beginning that, that, um, this was really for a person who couldn't afford, um, to charge their car. Uh, put a charger at their house and so they'd still be able to charge their car. I was just curious, um. I bought a gas powered car and I couldn't afford the gas. Are you going to pay my gas bill? You know, if we're expected to pay the electric for, because it's going to be coming out of town funds. Because, because, you know, wait, wait a second, because it's on a town utility, don't we pay for the town lights? We reimburse Eversource for our streetlights. They have a streetlight bill, which comes to us. So if they're drawn off the streetlight, the town does pay that to our budget. And who gets this thirty whatever cents? Because it sounded like it goes back to Voltposts. For their maintenance of the pole, not back to the town of East Hampton for the costs of there. So in effect, it's very similar to the Village Center project where we're responsible for the, uh, paying and charging everyone's car while Voltposts gets the money to maintain it.
Yeah, it's easy to see why you'd think that, but actually the, the net effect is, and James, of course, feel free to jump in, you can speak to this too, but that, they would cut a check to reimburse the town for, for that meter charge, separate meter charge than just running the lights.
So Eversource is now going to add another meter to each one of these poles to regulate all power that is used for these charging stations?
James? So, so yeah, there, there's a couple of things and it depends upon the installation, as in where you, you choose to do this. So if we are doing it in a private parking lot, such as let's say the library. The lights will be fed by an existing meter. Each of our chargers has a meter inside it, which we use, um, to measure what each driver takes out. In that instance, we reimburse the site owner, whoever owns that meter. At the agreed upon rate. So hypothetically, if your Eversource utility rate is twenty-six cents per kilowatt hour. Then Voltposts will reimburse that, uh, meter owner at twenty-six cents per kilowatt hour. Um, and we do that at a frequency that works for both parties, whether that's quarterly, six monthly, et cetera. Um, the thirty-six cents would then be, for us, would be thirty-six minus twenty-six. Which would only leave Voltposts ten cents to help cover the ongoing maintenance costs.
So, um, is that for the distribution charge, the public benefit charge, uh, combined charges on, on the town's bill? How is that? Is that all charge? Do you get charged or is it only for the, uh, distribution part of it?
So it's an average, um, cost. And we would agree with the meter owner. So if it's the public library. So the idea is we will make sure it's cost neutral to them, that they're not subsidizing the electricity.
So is that, they're getting, what, what charge are they getting? What, what is the charge for the user?
So in order to, in, in order to access the charger, they scan a QR code. They either download our app and set up an account. Or they can choose to go straight to a payment page where they enter their credit card information. Um, if they set up the app, then obviously you only have to do that once. All of your, um, account details are stored as per any other app. If you choose to go straight to like, um, the web payment page, once you finish charging. Then you'll be forgotten about and none of your details are stored. Um, but we collect the money directly from the driver.
So you're saying that whatever charge the town is getting will be reimbursed by Voltposts, even if it's in excess of the thirty-four cents a kilowatt hour. We will be, one hundred percent neutral and we will not have to pay for anything relating to these, uh, these units, correct?
Yes. And it's worth maybe highlighting that, you know, this, these charges have been procured. There are, our aim is to make sure that we are as democratic as possible. In serving as many regions of Connecticut as possible. There are some of the larger urban areas that would like more chargers than we are offering them. The chargers will be installed and it's only a question of whether or not. Um, you know, your East Hampton would like to participate or not. Um, you know, we've had requests for more chargers than we have. But our preference is to try and ensure that we, you know, serve as many communities as possible.
Seems like a logical step and providing chargers to our community. Seem to be well engineered, thought through, to be out of the way when, um, not in use. And I know it's in your mind to locate them in areas where they won't be in the way of them.
Definitely, yep. Striking that balance, not in the way, but also useful and not out of the way that who's going to find them, right? Who's going to sit there and wait for a couple of hours in the middle of nowhere?
We just have a question.
Rich?
On the, uh, location, uh, down at the library. And I, when I first looked at the locations. I didn't say, gee, they're going to put it in that back parking lot. I'm thinking it would be this kind of out of the way and, you know, certainly not visible from the road. Um, I think it's great that we're considering, uh, downtown, center area, center, you know, uptown. Uh, or at least the old town, if you want to look at it like that, the Village Center. I think, I think that's great, uh. Certainly because of the airline trail and you got a lot of people coming in, come out of town. And I think, I think that's a wonderful thing, uh, to, to offer people who, uh, who visit. And patronize our, our, our businesses. I didn't know if there was someplace else that might be a little bit more, uh, visible, uh, for the one down, for the one downtown in the Village Center. I don't know. You've got a couple of parking, town parking areas, um.
Yeah, those are great. Yeah, we actually looked into that and it's funny, you don't always notice, like, where do we have streetlights? Right? So I'm like, does the Village Center parking have lights overhead? Yeah, it doesn't, unfortunately. So that would, that's the issue. Include that as a potential location.
How about Center School? Do we have anything around or in that parking area that's open, accessible? Uh, do we have anything there that might fit the bill?
It's possible. I, yeah, I guess we're just, uh, recommendation. I mean, nothing set in stone here.
Yeah, well, again, um, I just thought something a little bit more, more visible, a little bit more open instead of being tucked.
Yeah.
Tucked in back for a lot of city, for it's being seen, number one. Secondly, for safety and, uh, of, you know, uh, prevent any, any other vandalism that can always, uh, occur. Sure. That was really only my, my thought pattern. So I think location Village Center is great. Uh, but if we can find a place that was a little more open, it might, uh, I don't know. I think it's workable.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I just have a few questions. You answered most of these already, but, um. I know there's a lot of apps for EVs. And it only, is this only going to be on your app? Like the Ford Mach-E has a few different apps in. Okay, they can, somebody, I, I'm planning my trip to go somewhere and I can plot out my spots. I need to stop at and hopefully find a breakfast place or whatever it might be. So is it only, this is only going to be on your app or than on many apps?
James, I think I know the answer, but I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
So, um, in, initially, um, it will be on the Voltposts app. Um, I believe we will be working to update things like Google Maps, et cetera. So they will sort of have visibility on there. Um, but as we, um, as we progress over time, I'm sure we'll be exploring, you know, roaming agreements with other companies, other apps. Um, but for now, with these level two chargers, um, they're less sort of, you know, you're top, you're stopping to top up your vehicle on the way to somewhere else. And they're more of sort of like a destination charger, where you're more likely to sort of get, um, repeat users. Or I guess possibly, you know, visitors to the town. Um, but yeah, at present it's just on our app.
And I know, I, this is kind of a tough question to answer. Uh, I know there's different levels of chargers and how fast they charge. I guess what I'm trying to ask is, is somebody going to be plugged into this for six hours to get a full charge if their battery is almost done?
So, so, yeah. So sorry, I, I realized actually as I was doing the presentation, I missed off the actual power of the charger. So it's up to nine point six kilowatts. Um, which is a decent amount of charge. In, for this type of charger, you're looking at, you know, perhaps one to two hours. Which would give you, you know, around eighteen kilowatt hours of charge. This is not a, um, a DC fast charger. Where you would fully charge your battery in twenty, thirty minutes. Um, and the aim of sort of level two chargers. Um, well, again, it depends on the location. Um, hypothetically, if you live in a city. You could plug your vehicle in overnight and then every morning, you know, your battery will be full. Um, but in, in the scenario of say a library or town hall. The idea is, is that after one, two or three hours, you will get a very decent amount of charge. That will allow you to continue your business. Um, it's unlikely that, you know, you wouldn't want to stay there at the library for six hours.
That point, is there a limit on time? Uh, so if we do one or two of these in town, that you don't have one person that is taking them up and leaving them there for twenty-four hours by dropping off their car? Having someone pick them up and then, you know, meanwhile, someone else cannot use the, uh, is there, is there some kind of time limit for parking of at these charging stations? Or is that something that would be done at the local level?
James, were you, did you want to reply or were you?
I mean, we, we work with the local community. Um, you know, if you want to put a sign up that says limit two hours, limit four hours. You know, so long as the limit isn't ten minutes, um, I'm sure you can find something sensible. We can help, um, reinforce that. So for example, if you tell us that the limit is, say, three hours. We can program into the system something called like idle fees. So if they charge for longer than three hours, they start to get charged, um, sort of extra for that. Um, again, typically, most people would charge somewhere. A-again, depends on the use case, but sort of between one to three hours at most, I would have thought. Um, but certainly if you want to, we, we have some standard signage. We're also happy to work. Um, to help provide some local signage with time limits.
So is there some sort of contracts that we're going to be able to review, to approve, to make sure that this does end up being cost neutral and if there's no nothing surprise that changes later and you don't know about it or it would have to come back to the council? Are there any changes? And how is that ordered?
James, did you hear that? So?
Yeah. So from our side. Um, and, you know, apologies, this is a, a process where we've been trying to talk to municipalities around Connecticut. Um, but basically, as we move through to the next phase of the project with PURA and the program administrator. Who is IES, we have, um, a very simple site host agreement that we would be asking you to sign. And yes, obviously there's more legalese than, than this, but it basically says that East Hampton gives us permission to attach to your poles. Um, that we will reimburse you for the, any, for any electricity, um, at the agreed cent per kilowatt hour rate. Um, so yes, we'd be able to get that across to you to review.
So we should be able to have that for our next council meeting before we approve this? We should be able to have that within a couple of weeks?
I think the plan is to, we have a resolution here, which authorized David to negotiate an agreement and come up with a proposal that we would then.
Uh, well, I'm not, uh, good with having a resolution to approve it without the fact.
We're not approving it. We're asking David to negotiate.
Why do we get a resolution to ask them to negotiate that to just be a?
Because that's how we do business.
We got, when was the last time we did a resolution to request, uh, a quote on something besides, um, uh, whether it's services?
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're telling David it's okay to apply for this and then once we apply for it, we'll be provided with this agreement that we would then.
Is that correct?
And that's, that's the intent, right? That's the only time we use resolutions to move forward is in the case of grants and it's not even all grants. But in this instance, because we're talking about a grant. Does the council, fundamentally, the resolution you'll consider in a few minutes, fundamentally, that says that it's the question of the council, do you want to go ahead and pursue the grant? If we're selected. We'll finalize sites. You know, the resolution also talks about, um, bringing back sites for you to consider. Certainly if the council wants to see the agreements that go with it, we can certainly, uh, provide those to the council as well, if you'd like to look at them. But fundamentally, the question for you tonight is, do you want to get in line? And have the opportunity to get a couple of these, uh, in town, whether it's here at the town hall and at the library or at some other location in the Village Center. That's the fundamental question.
Just a follow-up question. There are sixty units in this program for Connecticut?
Yeah, yes, up to sixty.
So assuming sixty, we're getting two of those. So we're, we're getting three point three percent of the units that are available in the state. How do we get so lucky at the size of our town?
It's a little bit of, well, you know, we have some great relationships around the state and they, they connected us with James. So it was really, it was very important. It's a little bit of, well, you know, we have some great relationships around the state and they, they connected us with James, so it was really, it was very fortuitous. And we've been searching for a while on that, so, looking for opportunities.
So we don't like the contract, this is not, this resolution is in no way um, saying that we're gonna actually install this. This is just to go out and get the quote and bring them back to the council to look at to see if we agree with them. So that's, is that what I'm understanding?
If that's how the council wants to handle it, that's certainly fine. We will get, as with any grant, if we get accepted for the grant, we get contracts and all of those things. I suppose if the council doesn't like what they see in the contract and we can't negotiate uh, any kind of a correction to that, you can say no?
Are there any further questions? Thank you, Jonathan and James, appreciate that. And I do six bids and contracts, do we have any?
Uh, that's what we got.
That's where you added.
Did we add it there or did we add it?
You ended up adding it here.
Okay.
Um, so just quickly, um, as you know, the uh, one of the responsibilities of the town or one of the uh, powers of the town council uh, is to, if it wants to review um, contracts for personnel services, uh, collective bargaining agreements for uh, the board of education. And uh, in accordance with the, it can approve, it can reject, or it can simply ignore, and within, and thirty days after it's filed with the town clerk, uh, it is automatically approved. So uh, Rep- uh, Superintendent Van Castle is here and he can certainly talk with the council a little bit about the uh, agreement uh, that was recently reached with the administrative staff, uh, as was alluded to earlier. Um, that uh, sets their salaries and various other benefits for the next three years, effective starting July one of twenty-six. Um, this matter was just sent to the council uh, in advance of this meeting, you have until October tenth to consider this, obviously with the fact that there are five Tuesdays in September. Uh, the calendar is a little bit screwy, so if you wanted to uh, consider this at later date, you could, but you probably need, well, you would need to set a special meeting if you wanted to do it at a new date, uh, and wanted to take some sort of action. But nevertheless, you have a summary that was prepared, you also have uh, the full contract, uh, if you saw your email today, there was also a markup given uh, that showed the changes that were to the contract that this particular go-around. Uh, again, as I said, Superintendent Van Castle is here and he can certainly answer questions or uh, talk to you about what the particulars are. So, I think it would.
Good evening, members of the council, uh, I'm here this evening uh, to uh, just do a, a, a cursory review as it stands right now with our uh, summary agreement uh, for the um, uh, administrative group within the district. Uh, just to highlight a process here that is important uh, to make known, uh, so the process of negotiations uh, is obviously very regulated by the state of Connecticut, and then that actually might answer some of the questions of a person who called in before, but I wanted to be known that uh, processes that we have to follow for it are outlined in statute. And the process for this negotiations actually began uh, it began in June, where there is a duty to confer notification that's provided to the town, uh, to the chair of the board of finance, where a board of finance member uh, is uh, uh, given or provided access to the negotiations. Uh, and through that, we do what's called, which is statutory required, and that is where we meet uh, with the liaison or representative group of board of finance, uh, that was uh, actually conducted in July. Uh, that uh, duty for has to occur within thirty days of commencement of negotiations. Timeline of negotiations is actually statutorily required. It all has to do with when the budget is submitted uh, to the town. So in August, we had our uh, our first session, which was a strategy session. Uh, we did utilize that as our duty to confer, and then we commenced negotiations with our administrative group uh, on August nineteenth. Uh, throughout the negotiations, uh, obviously, there are things of which uh, there were discussed, and I'll review some of those in summary this evening. Uh, and then, of course, there are, uh, there are other matters that are related to collective bargaining, but due to prohibited practices, it's not that, it's not able to be disclosed. But I can certainly share with you, even this summary itself provides a good insight, and I think it gives an overview really of what it was uh, that uh, the, the grounds that were made within the um, within the negotiations. Uh, once negotiations have been finalized, I sent a communication to the state department of education. Uh, they actually have a labor attorney that we have to file with the state that a tentative agreement has been reached. Uh, and at that point in time, uh, we have both representative group has to approve it through their general membership uh, as well as to the board of education. Uh, so the contract was noticed uh, to the board of education for its uh, September uh, eighth meeting, of which it was on the um, it was on the agenda for that evening. Often you'll find that uh, when we meet an executive session to review the tenants of the agreement, to make sure that the board is fully aware of what that agreement actually is. We review uh, the summary document as pro- as provided by uh, the council. And the council is made available, but I usually do not have council, that actually comes with me when we sit uh, with the board to review the uh, the collective bargaining agreement. Following the executive session, uh, in order for a contract uh, to be ratified, board has to do it publicly. So it was on notice at the board of education meeting. Board took action on it, ratified the agreement, and then from that point, I have to file it with the town. So uh, the board ratified the agreement on the Monday night of the board meeting. Uh, Tuesday, I get signatures on that collective bargaining agreement, uh, which at that point in time, once signatures have been put on the agreement, that's when I filed with the town clerk, and that was done on September tenth, uh, of which uh, it was provided to town clerk. And from that point, as uh, town manager Cox has just shared, there are two possible uh, directions that this would go. One is that collective bargaining agreement by statute, if it sits for thirty days, uh, it automatically becomes effective uh, post that thirtieth day. Or it can be brought up by the legislative body, which in this particular town is the town council, uh, where you have an opportunity to review the tenants of the agreement and make determination whether to vote to approve or vote to not approve. In the event that the decision is to vote to not approve, uh, this uh, gets brought to arbitration. And there is experience that I know this community has in regards to arbitration. And perhaps maybe what I'll share with you this evening may uh, compel uh, some to support. Uh, perhaps take no action if there's gonna be a further review of it. Uh, but I do wanna just provide an outline as to uh, as to what um, uh, what is in the collective bargaining agreement. So just going through the summary, I'm just gonna go through the higher level points to all of this, as well as answer uh, some of the questions that I've already heard this evening that perhaps may be helpful for everybody. Uh, so first, what uh, I think everybody has to be aware of is that collective bargaining in arbitrators, what they will look at is what is uh, the statewide average. Uh, at this point in time, the statewide average for administrative collective bargaining agreements over three years stands at ten and a quarter percent. Our average was nine point seven seven, that is an overall, but the general wage increase average is nine point three percent. So in comparison to the ten and a quarter percent, our nine point three percent is also a full percentage point below of the statewide averages. And that is something that an arbitrator would review to make a determination as to whether they felt as though that uh, that uh, that uh, settlement was fair. The next piece has to do with health insurance. There was a really significant shift, and I explained this uh, to the town council when we were going through budget deliberations, um, in that we moved our uh, health insurance uh, to, from a P P O uh, to a high deductible health plan. Uh, we were experiencing what could have been anywhere between a sixteen percent to a twenty percent increase. Plus, we had been granted a one-year waiver for the health insurance, uh, which was a two hundred fifty dollar offset to the fiscal year twenty-five budget. It was a s- significant consideration in this year's fiscal year, and had we not moved to the high deductible health plan, our financial position as it relates to insurance uh, would be far worse than we uh, than, than we were coming into budget season. With that being the case, uh, the agreement was such that the administrators were actually uh, a, a, a percentage point higher uh, than our other collective bargaining groups. So uh, as it stands, as it would be, would be effective for twenty-six, twenty-seven, which would be the first year of this contract, and it is a three-year agreement, is that their rate begins at twenty-one and a half percent of a cost here, the second year at twenty-two percent uh, of the, of that, or twenty-one, twenty-one and a half, and then twenty-two percent. Just in relation uh, to this, what is also often reviewed uh, is whether or not those are commensurate with other collective bargaining groups. The administrators recognize that they are higher salary, therefore uh, their amounts are more than you would find with our classified group within uh, the district. The next part I just wanted to identify uh, was just in terms of um, the annuities themselves. So we did have a standard increase with the annuities, uh, forty-five hundred, nine thousand, and thirteen thousand, five hundred. But the annuities themselves coincide with the overall package. So when I had shared with you the nine point seven, uh, when you look at that, uh, there are annuities built into that, uh, which are a part of that factor. But what's important to keep in mind, and I'll share at the end of this, is currently where our administrators are situated with towns too deep from East Hampton. Often what will happen is they'll look and they'll review regionally where we stand. And I think it's important to share, I think there's perceptions that perhaps East Hampton administrators are the tops uh, in our area, and I will share exactly where we stand uh, for the administrators. Um, there was a, a, we, we did uh, talk a little bit in terms of a, of a sick leave bank, that was formerly referred to as a sick leave bank, and I categorically changed the name of this uh, to really a maximum accrual account. Where at one point in time, uh, it was a hundred and ninety days, we did increase that we could keep in a separate account uh, upwards of two hundred seventeen days. Uh, which means that in order for there to be any payout, there is a separate maximum accrual account that could exceed that two hundred seventeen days. It's only on those days, whereas before it was a hundred ninety days, so anything higher than a hundred ninety days, they would get thirty days of thirty dollars per day uh, for that. Whereas now, uh, it actually, now they will not be able to approve uh, anything before they reach that two hundred seventeenth day. From that point is a thirty uh, dollar per day. That is pretty commonplace in collective bargaining agreements. Uh, but I wanted to know what that revealed. And then the last piece that I'll mention before I go into the larger uh, picture of uh, some of the pieces of where we situate is just the cost of coursework. So obviously, the cost of coursework has gone up. Uh, we wanted to open the contract uh, to make available to our administrators to remain uh, uh, current with practices, so therefore we did add an additional remuneration for professional development, but we extended it beyond just college coursework, to also professional development or uh, coursework that they would have with them. A question was asked in terms of um, a few things in this contract that were noted, and there is something I have to make, I, I really want the council to be aware, but also the community. In collective bargaining, there is something uh, known as regressive bargaining, okay? It is a prohibited practice. There are topics of which were not discussed in this collective bargaining agreement that were already pre-established of the collective bargaining agreement. So you can't enter into a good-faith bargaining and then automatically begin to remove elements out of a contract. So there was a question that was brought up, uh, or a comment that was brought up before in terms of uh, in terms of the sick days. So the vaca- the vacation days, the sick days, and the personal days, they were not discussed during collective bargaining. We were not in a moment where we had also moved towards regressive bargaining, which once again, that's a prohibited practice, where we would try to walk those back. Those were already established, you'll notice in the red line document, that there was no changes that were made to those. The state of Connecticut has a statute, uh, ten one fifty-six, that statute requires that there be fifteen sick days at minimum for teachers. Administrators by the state statute are recognized as teachers. Uh, therefore, there is a fifteen-day statute requirement. There are eighteen days that we have, but once again, we didn't try to negotiate more or less than the eighteen days. Uh, we just left it, uh, we left that where it was. We did not address uh, the travel. There have been already in this collective bargaining agreement, seven hundred fifty dollars for travel, that is not something that was new. Once again, not moving to the point of regressive bargaining, uh, that was just uh, not something that we had actually, uh, that we had addressed. So with that being said, what I do wanna share with you is just where the uh, collective bargaining uh, situates within the larger context of the area. Let me just show that here. So currently for the high school principal, so when I'll just, I'm gonna read them one time, just to give you a context of what districts uh, these are in reference to, and these are the ge- geographic regions that would be outlined. So Glastonbury, Region eighteen, Portland, East Haddon, Hur- Hurland, Middletown, Cromwell, Region seventeen, Rocky Hill, East Hampton, Region thirteen, Colchester, East Hartford, Weathersfield, Lebanon, Meriden, Bolton, Chester, Hebron, Mansfield, Marlborough, and Salem. So what we did was we took communities that were in the region, but we also went to those communities. For those communities that do have a high school principal, currently right now, uh, we are ten out of seventeen uh, within uh, that group. So we are not at the top, we are actually uh, below the halfway point. For middle school principal, uh, we were ninth out of nineteenth in the overall wage. For elementary school principal, we are eight out of twenty-second, uh, so slightly above the middle. High school assistant principal, we are at eight out of sixteen, meaning that we are directly in the middle. Middle school principal, we are eight out of sixteen, we are mid, we are in the middle. For elementary school assistant principal, we are five out of ten, we are in the middle. For special ed director, we are thirteenth out of twenty-two, we are uh, just slightly above the middle as it relates to where uh, that, uh, where that individual uh, is. So with that, I just give some further context where our administrators are situated in the area, I think it's important to know that. And I would be happy to take any questions there.
Going to the regressive uh, bargaining. So um, that is, if you at the onset of negotiations, they were going to talk about X, Y, and Z, you cannot talk about anything but X, Y, and Z, correct? Now, am I understanding that?
It's not that you can't, it's not that you can't bring it up, it's that if it gets brought up, there has to be a point of reason as to why you're gonna make that reduction towards that. And that's where you start to get into that regressive position of, at this point in time, where we knew where the statute re- existed with what is required. We didn't, we don't get into those conversations that might actually start walking that collective bargaining agreement backwards. If there was, if there was a proposal that was on the table, that perhaps we saw as an opportunity where you would then propose something alternative to that, you could potentially see if there might be a concession that would be made for it. But unless it's actually brought up, you're entering into the negotiations in good faith to the point where you're really going to address the areas that you're looking to address in that collective bargaining season. And it's not something that's always done in a singular collective bargaining uh, session, it's something that could take time, but it also could be done over multiple contracts.
So if we rejected this contract, and there were certain items that we thought could be addressed, would those be addressed in arbitration, or would it just be the, uh, would that then um, bypass this regressive uh, bargaining? If we set specific items where we have a concern and that these are some of the issues that we have as a town uh, government?
I think it's a great question. So uh, in terms of the way that arbitration works, is if there are concerns, that's what gets brought forward, and that's where the arbitrator then begins to do a further analysis of what were the discussions that happened during collective bargaining as it related to the topic? It wouldn't be something where you're gonna bring up an additional item that wasn't negotiated during collective bargaining. It's, it's specific to the collective bargaining that occurred.
So, so basically what you're saying, anything that's redlined in this thing you sent me today, we could actually challenge?
Anything that is redlined in there could be potentially a for review and challenge.
Okay. And I mean, unfortunately, with the, the short notice, I did not get through the whole thing, so I'd be inclined to reject it um, and uh, um, give us more time to read it and um, ask more questions, but I think there are, you know, with the way the Act Fair is voted, um, so strongly. And I personally believe that these are, these are the top of our education, and if we're going to start it to be top-down, just as in any business, uh, what you're willing to do for your, your top people, you should be willing to do for your lower uh, your subordinates and vice versa. So if we're going to look in the future to try to um, write in some costs from the board of education, I think we need to start at the top, and I probably believe that we need to take a, a longer vision. And unfortunately, with the time and strength, uh, it, it's been here since the. And unfortunately, with the time of strength, it's been here since the test we got it yesterday. I would be inclined, I'll make a motion to reject the collective bargaining. I have a second then.
I have to tell you, if you reject this, what goes on is out of your control. It goes right back to arbitration, and only the matters that were on the table for arbitration will be reviewed by the arbitration panel. They will look at what the administrators propose, they will look at what we propose, and frankly, they're gonna look and say, this is an agreed upon deal. They're gonna look at this and say, this was agreed upon and ratified by the Board of Education. If you think there are items that you want to be addressed specifically, then I suggest you hold a special meeting, take a couple more weeks and look at it. Hold a special meeting on the seventh of October and ask very specific questions. I think a motion adopted by this council tonight to reject is probably ill advised.
I have to agree with the town manager. I think that we should be holding a special meeting because I myself did, obviously, we all only got the red line document today. And I personally would like time to review that document before we vote.
You know, I think what we have to remember is although, you know, having spent a career in the, you know, private sector and how you run businesses and what you need to do, et cetera, et cetera. I, I have to tell you, education negotiations are a totally different animal. And I speak from experience, having sat on the, the Board of Education in the eighties and chairman for four years, and having sat on negotiating teams. The, the rules that we hear from Tim, we think are, man, who, who came up with these rules? Well, I'll tell you who came up with state, state letters. These are rules and regulations that we have to follow, and all school systems have to follow. And I'll, I'll tell you, Dave's comment is extremely well taken. Because the minute you say no, it goes to arbitration, and it's very simple. They choose this side or this side. And very simply, they rarely choose the side that wants to bring down the, the agreed upon item, salary, whatever it is. It's a very dangerous, dangerous game, and it can cost us more money than even what we're looking at right here. So we have to be, we have to be very, very careful here. The fact that, what Tim just brought up relative to placement of our, our management team relative to other, other superintendents, principals, et cetera, throughout the district, we're right in the middle. For us to try to go in and say, oh no, still too much, beat it down more, that's a losing proposition. That, I'm just telling you from experience, it's a losing proposition. Those sorts of decisions might rub against some of us with a, you know, with a private business experience. But I'm telling you, that's the world in which we're negotiating, it's not just us. It's every school district. But we have to be very, very careful here.
And at some point, you have to listen to the text.
And you know what? Absolutely. That, that argument Ted, I heard it thirty years ago and forty years ago, and you know what? We got kicked right in the butt. We got kicked right in the butt, and it can happen again, and I fully understand it. But you know what? Nobody on this town council has, other than I, have been on the Board of Education, have seen it. Nobody on the finance board has been on the Board of Education and has had to live it. Our job on a Board of Ed, their job on the Board of Ed, is to work within the system, within the rules, to be as, as responsible for the expenses to the town and not throw it into somebody else's hands that could really hurt us. That's, that's how it goes. That's, that's the reality of the situation. It's whenever people, we go into negotiations, it's a, it's a minefield. There's no way to body. And so while I hear exactly what you say, we may be cutting off our nose despite our face.
And I do, and I, I wanna echo just something that's been stated, and also is that it, it really does place the legislative body within a context of a discussion or a decision where there isn't a lot of background that you have as it relates to what occurred during a negotiation. So it's almost you're at a disadvantage to make that type of a decision. And now the summary that we provided for you gives some of the context, but it doesn't give all of the back and forth during those negotiation sessions. I can certainly say that the Board of Education, as well as the administrators, came to the table. There were things that were discussed that were agreed upon, or things that were discussed that were not agreed upon. And you get to this outcome that at the end of the day, you would hope that those who would have an opportunity to review it would see the merits of this collective bargaining agreement. But it's very difficult because once it is approved and it comes to you without having all of that information and right now, that whole piece to disclose around it, that's also something that what happens is we establish ground rules as part of the negotiations, and in most ground rules, you define what levels of information to be fair, and in our particular case, those ground rules outline that the more finance as the fiscal agent of the community, Board of Education, but not within those is the town council. So it's, it's difficult, and I, I sit here and I appreciate those that have come to speak in addition to myself in regards to it. It's because there's, there's little that I can say at this moment, other than to say that having negotiated collective bargaining agreements dozens over the past seventeen years, I'm gonna say to you, I do believe that this collective bargaining agreement, albeit doesn't provide all the answers or the solution you're looking for. I would gather, and having seen a lot of this happening in the state, that they would review this agreement and see the merits of the agreement. But once again, the decision does rest with town council to decide whether it feels comfortable agreeing to this, or whether it does not, or whether it just wants to leave it without vote. But with that being said, if you did do another meeting, I would be happy to be able to answer additional questions perhaps that people may have as a result of going through it, reviewing more of that. But I, 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 you know, I do understand the sentiments that I'm hearing from you this evening.
Mr. Chair, just a quick thing. So obviously, my intention is not to cost the town any more money. And we're thinking that if we don't accept this, this possibly will cost the town more money. Am I, am I reading that correctly? Take us to arbitration, chances on, it's not gonna go down.
So right now, and this is where the, you do the calculations on this. So in the initial year of this collective bargaining agreement, it's a fifty thousand dollar cost of increase to this community. Arbitration is gonna cost, cost you fifty thousand dollars. Okay, it could change the parameters or the outcome, which may change that bottom line, but it is a variable of consideration, and that's why we do our due diligence in the negotiations process to make sure that we have covered all of our bases to try to reach the best agreement that we possibly could.
Have you been involved in the arbitration?
Fortunately, I have not. We have actually settled agreements. I have, I've obviously gone through the process of mediation, which actually happens before you get to the arbitration. But in this particular case where we have ratified agreements, we've been able to maneuver, and let me tell you, the reason being is that I have a great familiarity with the arbitration process. And you try to avoid it at all costs, no pun intended, but at all costs.
And you would agree, having this sentiment yesterday is a little bit hard to make any decisions.
So, once again, the mechanics of it's getting to you, that's not my camp. Mine was to make sure that it is filed with this community, it is given, it is put there, it has been with this town since the ten. Summary documentation is not always something that even councils want to review. In this particular case, there was a request for it. There's a lot that there is to be reviewed. It's not as extensive of the contract as some of the other collective bargaining agreements, but whatever it would take to report, give you the time needed to go through it, have some questions noted, I, I would certainly respect that.
I mean, obviously, I, I don't know if I wanna roll the dice on the fifty thousand and fifty thousand, you know, if it's gonna cost us fifty thousand, whatever.
And then just remember, this all continues to come up. Just like if you look at the salaries in there, we've already, you know, they've all gone up twelve, fourteen thousand dollars in the last three years. You know, our, at some point, the town has to stand up and say enough is enough and strive to take care of the taxpayer. And you're right, we weren't at the negotiation, and maybe that's a problem because we're the ultimate responsible party to say yea or nay. And you know what? If you wanna give us a, a document with blindfold on and not know what happened, and then expect us to just rubber stamp it, that's not me. I'll tell you that right now. If I don't understand what went into it, you're just gonna tell me it's gonna cost the town X money without any backup or any documentation, I will not support that.
You're the per, you're not the first person that I have heard this from, when these actually do get moved to the town for vote. I think you share a lot of it, and you know, that's a good topic to bring up with legislators, you know, to state that, you know, as it stands, the fiscal agent of the community is the active participant that sits as the liaison outside of the Board of Ed. And that statute hasn't changed in terms of it, but perhaps maybe something that wants to be further reviewed. Because I do, that's that, you're being handed a document where there's so much more behind the scenes that went on, and you just don't have that background.
Seems to me we went to arbitration once before, about six, seven years ago. When, when.
We did one time, you're told that you're full of nothing.
We did one time.
That's right, but it, it, it's been both ways. So you know what, and again, I, I've not come to this. And that's why.
I'm trying to intervene and make a motion. For the section two weeks. Gives everybody. Okay.
Why don't you need someone else to make the motion?
I'm not table.
You can amend my motion.
How is that possible?
If, if there's no privilege, great.
If I may, we're gonna suggest you actually don't vote on that motion. Remembering your bylaw, but first of all, if you have a failed motion on this action, and you were to want to reconsider a motion to reject, then you have to go through that whole reconsideration process. Forget that. You, two of you can ask for this to be tabled, and according to your bylaws, that's it. You don't have to vote. Two of you get to table it. The only other action you would need to take is to set or to have two of you ask for a special meeting, or Mr. Chairman, you can set a special meeting of the council with or the seventh, as I suggested, or another date if you choose. But I think you probably just wanna hold that particular vote to another time, unless you feel like you wanna reject it and and, and deal with it at another time, but, or approve. I mean, you obviously could approve it, but.
Mr. Chair, I move that we table it to October seventh and hold a special meeting so that all council members have a chance to read the red line document and discuss it and vote.
Not votes in favor, same. And it's tabled until October seventh, is that what we're gonna set?
Yeah.
Proclamation for Eagle Scout JT Limer.
As, as noted, we have a proclamation recognizing JT Limer and his achievement of the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts, and so as the council often does, it adopts the proclamation for transmitting to the youth at their Court of Honor, which is to be held, I think it's the thirteenth, the twelfth, whatever that Sunday is, the twelfth of October here in, in state up in the quiet corner, and if somebody is interested in going and attending on our behalf, certainly you're welcome to. Otherwise, we'll ensure that he gets it and is presented at that court of honor.
It's a Sunday.
It is a Sunday. So maybe we have someone that will go back, we can communicate on that, but we'll make sure.
I can tell you, I give my daughter. Is he here?
He is not.
Proclamation, Town of East Hampton, Connecticut, proclamation honoring Eagle Scout JT Limer. Whereas the appointment of the rank of Eagle Scout is an outstanding achievement, and whereas scouting provides our young people with the opportunity to experience life, build moral character, and grow as a responsible individual, and whereas JT Limer, a Boy Scout Troop Eight of East Hampton, Connecticut, has earned this distinguished honor, now therefore, meet the Town Council of the Town of East Hampton to hereby extend our congratulations and best wishes to JT Limer and his family on behalf of all the citizens of East Hampton. We further wish JT Limer our very best in all his future endeavors.
Both consecutive, it's not any discussion, but not present favor of proclamation for JT Limer. Eagle Scout, we sit in five, I say nine. Close name. And item seven B, review impossible action, resolution, electric vehicle charging stations from bolt post.
So in follow-up to the conversation you had earlier, as I noted, there is a resolution for consideration by the council, which does basically two things. One authorizes me to work with the Clean Energy Task Force to apply for participation in the pilot program that Pura has for the installation of the bolt post facilities on lamps sold and managed by the Town of East Hampton. And then the other item is that it does call for me to report back to the Town Council regarding approvals prior to the installation, so that would be the location, the contract, other items that you may wish to, to review so that you can move forward. So that's the resolution in front of you.
One quick question. What happens if bolt post goes bankrupt?
That's an interesting question. Oftentimes, there's some discussion of what happens at the end of life in those agreements, but we could certainly decide to take them on ourselves. We could certainly shut them off. If bolt post disappears, there's no support for the payment function there, so I imagine we would shut them off. Further questions?
For vote, vote. Who's in favor of the resolutions, please signify or say hi. This, this comment, thank you for the Clean Energy Task Force for still judging. Very good, thank you. Agenda item seven C, at this point in the past Seattle two.
Agenda item seventeen, review impossible action on resolution for the Firehouse Hearing Committee. Mr. Chair, would you like to start, or is it looking to review yours?
I did it our last again.
Madam Chair. I guess the question was me. The. Resolution that uh was provided by Mister Henson's last meeting after my review of it. I thought there were some omissions, some changes that would be helpful. Get that proud process underway again. We've uh, we are now looking at. A. What what it called, process that is going to go into its third time Town Council. We've had various agreements along the way, we've had. Uh provision to purchase or move ahead towards the purchase of eleven Skinner Street, that fell apart. And in my mind, we needed. A resolution that was more directed specifically to task to get this process underway. And moving ahead, if it's going to happen, it needs. Full effort and support and backing, not only the Town Council, but all of the uh. Fire Department. Fire Commission personnel, and there needs to be a big place in place to properly educate public. We're also obviously going to be looking at a location, potential location for this. That is a little bit more specific in the language that I presented, and. Mister, they had your original, your proposal was six month window. Not sure of all the work that is necessary to get done. And be accomplished in that, therefore, I stretch this out to a year. I think is uh a more reasonable estimation of time. As to the my intent on the nine member board. They were then counsel. Pointed, and all of these individuals will be appointed soon as we have a resolution in place. And it is also intended to balance it politically. Similar to what was done with the Ambulance Task Force and Senior Center of Task. It also takes into consideration the current work and and eventual report. But towns, on the town plan of conservation and development, that will have a, we're looking. At developing a fire station, new fire station. That looks well into the future and not just where we are today or even where we were ten, ten, twenty, thirty years ago. But I think I've undertaken incorporated. Goodly amount of what you had, a lot of it is maybe uh worse than the thing, but it's also solid points. Accordingly. Adam, Chair. Would make a amendment. May motion. Adoption of uh. In. Resolution submitted by Mister Hens. And I will make a motion to substitute the language of that motion. With the language. In agenda item seven C, as submitted by me.
Is that it?
I'm thinking. Uh, uh, just a quick question, so again. Um, I don't have my Robert's rules here, but I've never had that where someone can change a motion that's already been made and seconded. Um, and I'm just curious, I was just tabled to this meeting, can someone show me where in Robert's rules that the chair? Or someone else on the table can um if it's changed by motion that it's already been made and seconded.
All motions. Active. No, it's a simple amendment, she amended your mo- amended motion.
So therefore, I can be going and change my motion when I, it's already been uh made and seconded.
That's not part of rules, rules of state. It was a procedure under proper shows.
Uh, with original person making the motion can amend the motion, but I.
No, anybody, anybody. Any member.
I mean, I can have to go, I can go get my book, but. Yeah. The, I have it, it's upstairs, I can go get it, um. Um, when a motion is made and seconded, it becomes the property of the floor, and the other members of the body are able to amend the original motion. So.
Well, where do they, is there need to be a super majority or a majority, or what is the?
No, by 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 the normal voting rules, so in this case, a majority um could. On a motion in a second to amend the original motion. You can amend, and I suppose what's going on now is that the amendment is to substitute the language that. The chairman has proposed, or the member Markham has proposed for the version that you put, so. That's the amendment that would be in front of the committee tonight.
So you go on even, and then we go on.
And then you would vote on the original motion, which in theory would be.
Human.
Voting on that again.
Yeah.
Um, the question I have in my head, and I, I believe you can have subsequent of, you know, additional amendments. Um, it might get difficult to track, but you can amend, so I mean, for example, if you wanted to revise. What's been proposed in the amendment, you can certainly do that.
Sure.
Um, I mean, there's, there's a lot of possibility that. You want, I can go get the book and we can confirm, but that's my understanding.
Mister Henson, okay with that answer, would you like to use the?
Uh, it's only, if you wanna make a ma- a motion to amend my uh thing, but I'm not changing my uh original motion, it has been seconded. So if the board wants to vote to amend the motion, and the town manager says that that's in the Robert's rules. Uh, I've never heard of it, but if that's what he says, then that's what you wanna do, then that's your practice.
So on the table, we have the amended motion submitted by council, personally, Markham. Is there any discussion?
I I used to have one question, I'm sorry, um. Mister Chair, is there a reason we picked Narian? I'm asking this actually for another reason.
I left the number what uh.
Oh, I was asking this, if we change this thing, we could have another town council person with.
Would they have a hybrid?
Uh, I, that's why I asked if it was nine was for a reason. Uh, that was my only thought, is that we could actually add, if we do have a new member on board here, we can actually add one to the active town council. That was just a thought.
Procedure, yes, you could. In, in my thinking, this is gonna be something, this group is going to come out with. If not, a unanimous report virtually.
No, I'm open, I I was just bringing that up, so we have somebody, uh, I don't wanna say fresh, but somebody maybe even a new council, that's all.
Perhaps we can say that three members listed in the third of the town council two should be from current and at least one from the new council?
Maybe, I, I would, I'm open, I'm just bringing it up.
Wouldn't it be provocative of a new council to add someone? Were working necessary at the time. It would seem to me that if in fact there was a real need to put someone from the new council. Um, assuming new, new people behind the desk there. Uh, they could always add it at that point in time, see that, that would seem reasonable.
We haven't voted for, got a second on substituting the the resolution.
Yes.
We didn't vote on it yet.
Okay.
And I know I need a discussion phase, something that hasn't even happened yet.
Call to vote for the motion to replace Mister Henson's version with the version presented by Mister Markham.
Hi.
All those in favor?
I.
opposed? Second motion bears. Okay, further discussion.
To be clear, you're now discussing the original motion, which is to approve a resolution, but the language is now the version that was presented by. So now there's discussion on amendments for that language.
That was the only discussion I had, I guess, was that. Um. I did that.
So as you, you so clearly um stated here, and in your, from your first part of it. But in your intent to um get rid of stations one and two by saying that they're obsolete or rid of due to your actual work. Um, been in the community for seven years and have uh reached a state of obsolescence, so. In reality, you're basically saying that the um task force is now supposed to terminate both houses, even if the cost and rehab them. Um, is. Uh, if it's cost prohibitive to build a new one, that the cost to rehab would actually be palatable. So i- it just seems that in your um resolution, you're trying to spearhead um the direction of the committee. Uh and not moving it over.
In essence, yes, that's been the.
But that's not, but that's not what.
Ten, can I speak?
You may, sir.
Thank you, that was the intent of the last commission. We've had three workshops within the council. I don't think we were on the council point, and the discussion all along has been, we've reached a level of obsolescence. We know that the Cobalt Fire Station sinking in the ground. And we know that it's very difficult, and there's actually been some damage caused to vehicles. Trying to get in and out of the company one, Martin Hill garages. We need a facility that doesn't need or pardon responding to emergencies. And we need something that certainly protects. The health of our firefighters. With the maintenance of the equipment, what they. Uh, yeah.
Under number two, this version does state that cost estimates should be provided to bring the existing facilities into full compliance. I think that is a needed step for the transparency of the process, so that the public can see what the actual cost would be to keep those cars.
I think the fire team and the firemen and the fire uh commission would all agree. That new, a new firehouse.
If I may, I note in the original version, the word may was included, that it may have reached the end, uh or that it may no longer meet the operational needs. I don't know whether the council wants to hedge its bets there, so to speak, or leave it alone, but in the previous version. The word may was used to describe the obsolescence or operational issues associated with at least fire one.
I'll, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment. I'll accept it.
So if that's the way the council wants to handle it, I would suggest that you say that uh but may have reached a state of obsolescence that may no longer meet the operation, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, for that kind of power.
Any further discussion? Okay, uh, I'll call to a vote then, the revised version presented by Mister Markham with the change of the word may throughout the document where necessary. Been referring to the obsolescence of the current firehouses. All those in favor?
I.
Close. More than can, please note one, nine. I will turn the meeting up over to.
Thank you. Item eight, subcommittee reports and updates, are there any subcommittee reports or update?
Um, on the Plan of Fast Innovation and Development Steering Committee, we are actively working on the survey that will go out to the residents, and that will be discussed at our next meeting. Which is on October the ninth. Um, and hopefully you'll be able to get that out to the residents very soon.
Very good. That's it, that as I see it is an important component of a whole lot of things. Do we see this survey?
Yes, yes, we will, um, we'd be sharing that with the council before it goes out, um, and yes, the fire facilities, emergency facilities, that has been part of the discussion of the Plan of Fast Innovation Development, so it does tie. That as well.
No further reports. Moving on. And item nine, new business, viewer homestead property tax exemption warrants.
Um, thank you, so the council has a, has a heavily borrowed version of a potential ordinance that would implement. What we're affectionately calling a homestead exemption uh for residents who own residential property that serves as their primary residence in East Hampton. Um, last legislative session, more more accurately, the twenty twenty four legislative session is part of the. Uh, I believe is part of the budget adoption or the budget implementer. Now, the legislature adopted a section of the state statutes that is very short. And allows basically a legislative body to implement the exemption for owner occupied dwellings, including condominiums. And units in common interest communities that are primary residences such owners. Uh. That consist of not more than two units, a, a, an exemption from property tax of not less than five, nor more than thirty-five percent. Not many municipalities, I think, know about it, uh, the town of New Milford, from whom I borrowed uh the language. Uh, is probably the first one to be considering it, I don't know whether they've adopted it, I think they might be talking about it right now. Uh, as a matter of fact, or maybe they talked about it last night, I don't know. Um. The intent, of course, is, as the statute says, is to allow that a person's residence that serves as their primary residence could receive a, essentially a tax break. What that does, of course, is shift that burden somewhere else. It would shift, in this case, that burden to, to commercial properties, um rental properties. Um, and second homes owned in East Hampton by individuals who are primary residents somewhere. The reason I brought it up, frankly, is because. We know that we're going to go through a revaluation in the upcoming. October one, so coming up in a couple of days is the official date of that review. And we surmise, I don't think we've gotten detailed information yet from our uh appraisers, but. We surmise that based on the experiences of other municipalities in the state. That residential property values will increase perhaps as much as fifty percent. Um, and that's um, commercial property values may increase in the neighborhood of twenty or so percent. What that will cause is another share in the. In who pays the property tax bill for the community, right? So if those of us that owns residential property here in town see that increase. The mill rate's gonna go down, but I know that my tax bill will go up. Even if the tax levy didn't change. Because I have a bigger piece of the pie. In comparison to those other categories that I. That's why I brought it up for the council to consider as perhaps a way to address. There's a lot of people who have their primary residence in East Hampton. The assessor is probably throwing daggers at me right now because that's a lot of work for them. It's a lot of work for the finance department. But it's something to consider. So I put it in front of you as a draft or discussion purposes, if you think it's something you want to pursue. Uh we can discuss that, if it's not something you want to pursue or you want to hold in your pocket for later, you can discuss it then, there's no time for it.
Sure, yes.
And what percentage of the grand list? Is um. The various categories. So I think the categories might be people live in their home. People who live in Florida and pay uh. And second home here or other places. Um multiple families, multiple homes, you know, multiple homes rentals. And then commercial even. So. Do we know what percentage of each of those?
Not up to that. But. And maybe we can't figure out all of those, maybe we have to back into some of those, but we can certainly uh try and get that information. So that you have a better sense of how it might. Impact people. Or impact the community where.
I think it's worth pursuing um if there is going to be that disparity between. The uh resident and the commer- the residential housing and the commercial. Um. Where it's gonna be interesting to see is that um. How the rental properties, since they're all phrased by their income and expense report versus. Um their actual market value um as if they were a skid row home. So if I have a a single family property, it's gonna be assessed differently if it's a if it's listed as a rental property in town. Um so it depends on where that where that fits in as well, so to Jack's point, um.
But in. If you're speaking is how it gets assessed. Um and how that impacts the grand list, that's one item, wouldn't be that particular example would not be. Um well, would not qualify for.
I understand what I'm saying is that we'll have a a if we have a significant number of rental units that are not part of that, you know, depending on how they're they're um. So if they're all at fifty percent too, except, you know, Stop and Shop or or one of the major large buildings only went up twenty percent. Now you're hammering every uh rental property owner because if their property went up fifty percent, the same as regular homes. That that would actually, because that's gonna be transferred on to the tenants. And as we know, we have a lot of rentals in town, which is going to have a very negative impact on many people as well. So I would like to know the rentals um. A- as well, because because that will have a a major impact on how this calculation will be.
Sure. Is it possible um for us to? So to not do it for everyone, but to it for a subset?
Subset of primary owner?
Yeah.
I don't know. You can look into that.
I mean, I'm thinking, for example, maybe seniors. People over eighty four, I feel like.
People over eighty four.
Cool islands. Potentially based on income, but potentially be.
Or some other wealth. Or or some other criteria, add in another criterion.
Yeah, that's an interesting question because, of course, it's since it is a new piece of legislation, very short, I put the totality of it in my notes for you all. Um. I'll have to talk a little bit with the attorney about how the courts have viewed municipalities um. Expanding, if you will, upon what. The state said, and you know, the sometimes we're allowed to, we're generally allowed to be more restrictive. And maybe that would be qualified as more restrictive, so we'll look into that.
Yes, but um as many of our seniors, their houses are in trouble. How did that affect? Uh because it says that they can use their their uh. You know, their residence, uh husband and wife can uh, you know, have separate residence if they uh they have multiple homes. Um how would that be, they know that there are certain restrictions uh if someone a property is entrusted as far as voting and, you know, whether they're. Technically a taxpayer or not, if they're just a trustee of their trust.
So um. I I think it answers that in the uh in the information here.
That we got.
Yeah, in other words, if it's a revocable trust. Uh where you and the trust are essentially the same thing, that would qualify with your payment. I think it's in, I'm pretty sure it's in there, I looked at.
A lot of them are uh irrevocable, revocable trust before they retain like use. So.
Normally they that works, but.
Did you say retain life use?
Yeah.
That I remember that was uh.
I know it's maybe I missed it, but. They know the special definition, I don't really. So I know that there are plenty of people that do an uh irrevocable trust and then retain like use.
Well, if if the town were to go forward. We have, we can decide how we, remember, the the legislation. Says you can do it. We borrowed from what uh New Milford wrote on how to structure it. So I think we have the ability to structure it how we want.
And it would still have to let down the public hearing, town meeting, all that kind of.
Not town meeting, but public hearing, yeah, public hearing, yeah. Of course, yeah, once you decide on what you want to present, if in effect you do, then yes, you publish a public hearing and move ahead.
David, you you were explaining some of this to me earlier today. And the this language appeared in the legislative and actors bill.
The budget implementer bill, I I I think that's what it was in.
Section seventy.
Seventy one, it's like the six hundred and thirteen page of the document. Frankly, it's an odd location for it, it's an odd. Um. Piece of the statute. It was an odd placement in that. At the end of the budget implementer, there's a lot of bills that are specific to municipality. If you own a business in the city of New Haven and you filed your personal property thing by. December fifteenth, you're considered timely. If you live in Bolton and you did this, then you're okay.
That's.
You're right, you know, I mean, it's odd things like that, and that's where this was. This is, I think, which is why I think so many municipalities don't even realize this enough.
Is that are we aware if this ever had a public hearing at the Capitol?
I am not aware.
Yeah, can we get any kind of report on it?
Yeah, you can go to the, you're, I mean, the. The New York, yeah, the Connecticut site, and that's the whole thing about the bill. That's what hearings it had and everything.
Yeah, I mean, we can find it, if you're interested in it, we can certainly try and find. Whether there was discussion about this specific item.
I looked and I didn't see any discussion of section seven.
I I don't doubt it. But it was in public act twenty four dash something or other that was executed by the governor. Adopted by the legislature and. Are there other questions that the council would like to look at, uh would like me rather to look at, uh at least at this point? Before it comes back and do you want it to come?
Um so in in the second paragraph, it says not less than five percent or more than thirty five percent. Is that something that's determined based on how the calculations come out, or is that something that we would set when we put this? Because obviously.
My reading of it is that you get to set that, that's why I bracketed it and italicized it. Um New Milford has decided, I believe, that they're going to set that rate every year. To me. I don't think that's a great plan, frankly. Um so I wrote it in a way that. We would decide or you would decide it will be X. Ten percent, fifteen, twenty, whatever it was, it will be X. And everybody knows that's what I'm gonna get off my assessment. If I have this as my.
I think we uh we have to be very careful with this. Um. Whenever. We do something along these tax lines, especially with this. If it helps somebody, as you point out, Dave, it hurts somebody else. That's that's really what's going on here, and with a stable budget. If you give a number of tax exemptions. Really what that does, as you know, decreases the grand list. And for a particular budget. To be ma- to be maintained, that increases the mill rate. So, you know, at first you may take a look at this and say, hey, oh, this is great, we're getting taxed. Don't don't, you know, not so fast, because there might be a benefit. Which is um. Maybe uh shaved back a bit by an increase of a mill rate. I can see where this this homestead thing might be. Fair or work well. In um in a resort town. Where uh perhaps there are a lot of uh out of staters who come in by buy homes, they don't live there. And um, you know, people who do live there for the entire year, left holding the bag when they like when they leave. I can see how perhaps they might want to uh charge a premium to those out of staters for coming in. I under- I understand that. Uh. We gotta be careful here because what it will tend to do is raise to some degree the mill rate on everybody. But it will also hurt, as you point out, commercial business. And. If there's a thrust that we should be taking here. Uh it should be to help the low income and elderly. With a with a homestead exemption like this. Where anybody who has a homestead. Irregardless of income. You could have highway earners, high income people benefiting benefiting far more. Than what a low income. Uh resident will benefit far more multiple times. So. It, you know, we're in this town. Together, to work together. And uh and we have to be very careful about uh implementing something that sort of. Benefits one at the expense of someone else. So. We can take a look at it. I don't mind doing that, especially with regard to the new uh. The new numbers coming out for assessments, but. That's just. That's just a warning, I think we need to. We really need to be concerned with.
But and that's a that point. As you discussed when we were talking about um. Motor vehicles is has been discussed when we're talking, when municipalities talk about the exemptions given to. Now you can point out, anytime. Some category. Gets an exemption from their property. Whatever, for whatever reason. Somebody else pays a little bit more because there's a shift in that mill, there's a shift in the burden, which causes a shift in. So. I understand the the point and and I'll we'll look at is and um. Council member Solomon pointed out. Whether we can, whether we feel comfortable, perhaps is the better way to put it.
Hmm.
Narrowing down the categories of people that want to get this. Frankly, the. The existing exemption. For specifically geared towards senior and others are not great in the state of Connecticut precisely. They were written many decades ago and have never been indexed. So the thousand dollar exemption that a person gets. For being. Above a certain age or for being a veteran. Was okay. When their house was valued as it was in nineteen seventy five.
Right.
But the way their house is valued in twenty twenty five. A thousand dollars is thanks for the forty bucks I'll I'll buy a gallon of.
Right. All right, this one is very sensitive.
So. Unless there are other things, we'll take what you've asked tonight, we'll take a look at it and we'll uh bring this back to you on the fourteenth. You can consider this stuff or continue, rather.
Any other discussion? It'll be before, I'm sure.
But you have taken it that we are so. Continue to look at.
Yes, yes, we'll come back and we'll take a look at those questions you had. Uh and any that anybody throws at me in the interim, we'll come back and talk about it, uh on the schedule for the fourteen at this point.
Good, agenda item nine, B, review of noise ordinance.
Um. Just quickly, uh the, as I noted, the town council has been, a couple of members of the town council have been looking at a noise ordinance. Uh that was originally drafted by one of the council members and was, comments were provided by staff. Uh and some concerns were outlined by us about how uh it would work. Um. Those council members reviewed it and a revised version was sent back uh for uh discussion consideration. Um. Basically, I have put it to the council for you to begin to sort of have the public conversation about. What you're comfortable with. I might add. Uh on the table for you tonight, I I put the specific. Uh proposal that was given to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh I alluded to it in my notes to you and my agenda note to you, uh that the Planning and Zoning Commission has received. I think what I referred to as either complimentary or um um. What are they, companion regulations, or I think is what I called it, companion regulations in in the zoning regulation. For particularly aimed at construction related activity. So I'm I'm giving that to you, they're going to consider this in November, I think. I'm giving that to you so that you kind of understand at least what the Planning and Zoning Commission is looking at. And the context of a a potential zoning or rather a potential noise ordinance. Uh from the community, I know certainly uh that the the chief of police would echo the comment that was made by an individual early today earlier today. About uh shooting sports, uh hunting, those sorts of things. Uh certainly, we have sportsman's club here in town uh that we probably want to consider how that might be addressed in here, if in fact the council wants to move forward. The police department uses that sportsman clubs for certain training activities, certainly others for sport. Uh and of course, hunting, which is a a legal activity in the town. Um. So. You've heard comments from the community, a couple of comments from the community about just the concept ordinance that leave it to you to discuss how you wish to proceed.
I just have two things, I I did work with uh. My chair on this a little bit. And uh after listening to probably four or five people today and obviously Mr. Miles bringing up some good points. I think we need something, this might be too much, obviously, I guess, but I was talking to Pete earlier today. I can't have his officers out there at uh kind of seven in the morning because. You don't like the neighbor Moe is lawn at ten to seven, but that's not a, that's not a a way to use our our officers. Um so I think we need to maybe revisit this fine tune a little bit, do I think we need something? I do think we need something. Uh I think we should do is um if. Pierre and I are be back on this, I'm definitely willing to listen to somebody like Steve Amato, brings up a lot of good points. And other people in this town that, you know, do this for a living. And uh and see what we can find him.
Yeah, I I feel what Mr. Fevel said, uh we looked at ordinances from many towns. We um put these together based on a lot of different uh comments that we've gotten from the public, so this certainly is not meant to say. Here's what you have to do, we want feedback from the public, what items do you see as problems? What items would you like to keep in here? What items do you think we could throw out? That's the point of this, this is to listen to you and make sure that we're putting something forward, that is what we want. So this is just suggested items that we've seen in other towns. If East Hampton doesn't like any of them, I think that's what we need to discuss and hear from the residents, what what key points are important to you? What do you currently see as the major factors when it comes to this?
Um I I mean, I I'm not in favor of uh this. Uh here it goes. Um. And uh it seems like a lot of the scams because of what we're doing, uh which is a bad visual, so I do feel that it's very similar to uh history repeating itself. Um I having read through this, um I do have some concerns where um. Your noise. Can't be heard within a hundred feet of your home, your property line. So uh. Can't be heard within a hundred feet of your home, your property line, so um. So you can't ride your ATV on your property line according to this if you make any noise. Um, so at what point is your land yours and what plant, uh, like, do you say, oh, I need to get my neighbors, my rent, and, um, you know, I wanna ride my ATV? And it, it just seems crazy, power equipment over ten thousand pounds. Um, well, I think a tractor, tractor, uh tractor is also um power equipment, it's over ten thousand G W. They have a brake for a secure, uh for a reason. Um, and to say that that cannot be done within a certain hour. Um, the fact that we have to put an exemption for the garbage truck noise, we might be being a little bit restrictive. Um, again, fire alarm, um, if my fire alarm's going off for thirty minutes, if my house is burning, I really don't care that we're um, you know, having a little noise. Uh, and some of these are just absolutely ridiculous.
Yes, I know, you wrote joke on the topic. Again, we were asked to put something together, you said the comments that came from the public. This is nothing that is set in stone, these were taken from wording from other towns. It is up to the council and the public to decide if they feel any of these items are needed or not.
Will be, the committee of two is going to take a look at this and make some recommendations.
What are they doing if that's what they were supposed to be doing, I thought, coming back to us, so now what is, what is the next step that is the community is going to be doing? That would be my, my question.
I would like to hear from the people in town, obviously, what exactly with, like Pierce said, what, what are we looking for? And I actually like to talk to somebody, again, like Mr. Amato and some other people in town. You know, maybe Mr. Foyner, he does this, uh I have to agree about the ten thousand, I didn't really think about this, but my, my pickup, my one time pickup cost over ten thousand. My horrible. Yeah, so there's obviously a lot of fine tuning, this was something we kind of run together and like, uh, we, we, we've said before that we kind of um did a little bit from my surrounding town. Um, you know, we didn't look in, uh, you know, believe it or not, like say, Litchfield, Tony, and we're, it's, it's very strict, uh, this was not what we thought. We, we did some strong thousands of comparison files. And that's where we got some of this, obviously, we need to fine tune it and work with it and talk to the people in town.
Does the council want to put it on an agenda for just public comment? Or do you want to officially do a public hearing, that wouldn't be normal, but you could, but we could put it on your next agenda or specifically. A moment to receive public comment on this ordinance or on this, not even ordinance, on this proposed language. If that's, I mean, that I think perhaps aligns with what you were talking.
With that, I'd like to hear, you know, are there things in here that people feel are important, or are there things they don't like?
Right, as you say, or is this even worth going, pursuing any part of it?
Right, or do you want to throw it out altogether, that's up to the residents of the town?
I'm gonna agree, so I'm hearing that we'll put it on the agenda as a specific item for receiving public comment of the draft.
Right. Just one, one point, to what degree this has crossed over into P and Z regulations, either currently promulgated or. Being considered, in other words, my point is, I just want to make sure whatever comes out of this, in fact. Is the same as or doesn't crisscross whatever P and Z regulations are, that's my only.
Sure, so they have in front of them, uh, the language that I put on your table tonight, they'll look at later, and I think there are some um. There are some overlaps, there are some um disagreements, I'll call it, between the language. So I think that we ought to align them, that's perhaps one comment that we would make, certainly that's one that Juliet, the planner made. Um, so, from a staff perspective, those are things that we'll comment on.
Okay, as, as long as what we say here is the same as what we say here.
Yeah.
Or not, in kind, not prediction.
And what we've been trying to do lately with staff is to try to minimize duplicating language so that you don't have to find it every time, so. Um, or don't have to worry more accurately about language in one area being changed and not in the other. So if we, it might be one of those scenarios where we'll reference outside of the times as identified in the zoning code or something, that's right, or vice versa.
Yes, I, I did speak with Julia about that, and that's when she provided this. Sheet from planning and zoning of what she's suggesting, so that we're not trying to duplicate efforts or override anything else. That these would be handled under planning and zoning, and if necessary, we would make a reference, but it's in their regulations.
Uh, so you'll have that on your next agenda as a specific uh item for public.
Turn to item ten, town mayor, the report.
So my main points are gonna be the previous ballots, bills, and boilers. It happened to work out that, that way tonight. Um, ballots, first off, uh municipal election coming up, in case you all didn't know. Uh, so ballots for that will be available uh the beginning of October, October three. Uh, and uh, early voting will be going on in uh the, so absentee ballots will become available on October three. Early voting will go on, uh as noted in my report, uh from October twenty through November two here in town hall. And then, uh after that election will be on uh November four over at uh the high school. Um, bills, the bad news for those of us that are on sewer, our sewer bill is coming. Uh, and that bill is due in October and again in um April, if someone chooses to pay into installments. So those are coming uh with the revised rate of six hundred and five for the annual uh bill uh per unit. And the last thing I want to mention is not in my town manager report, it relates to boilers. Uh, last night at the board of education meeting, uh superintendent Van Tassel mentioned to the board of education that we have. Uh, an issue with a boiler at uh memorial school, and we're right now looking into how we proceed. So we're, we have two boilers at that school, one of them is down right now. Um, and uh, these are units that are uh from the early nineties. And are not uh easily repaired or replaced. Uh, so we seem to have located the parts we might need to do for a repair. Um, but it's a twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar activity, just to repair the, whatever that map is, thirty and change year old boiler. We're also looking at uh what the costs would be for an outright replacement of the entire system. Uh, and uh moving that forward instead. Um, there are two boilers there, as I mentioned, both of that, both of that early nineties age, so thirty and so years old. Um, and we have a little bit of a concern that we're about to experience the same relatively catastrophic failure that we did uh. In the first boiler, so I mentioned that to you as something that'll be coming down the pike, uh as we work through that. There are no funds available in the capital uh fund for that. Um, we'd rather not push that over onto the operations funds uh for the board of education, that's a. A thirty thousand dollar hit that we would rather take there, so we're looking at what our options might be for the best way to spend. Uh, the town's funds, so I just prep you on that uh as a potential repair that's gonna be coming forward. Uh, and we're looking at how we might want to fund that, that's why I'm bringing it up to you. Uh, because there might be an involvement for you along with the board of finance. Other than that, my report is always uh is available on uh the town's website and um, the agenda packet and on my page. I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Apparently not.
Well, good.
Right. Turn to item eleven, appointments.
Uh, there are none.
I would just point out that if you're, any member of the council has recommendations for the new fire outside committee. Please submit them. To the chairman of the appointments committee. Good item twelve, tax refunds.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return seven refunds totaling two thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars and two pennies to the recorder.
Motion made, we seconded, tax refunds, is there any discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Public remarks, is there anyone at this point who would like to make public remarks, John?
They're, they're, we don't want to.
Now, this is four oh one four seven, close after having them. Uh, uh, based on what I've heard this evening, uh a couple of comments, first. Um, for the electric sites, please be considerate of um. That those spaces, I don't believe to be specifically all the time used for electric vehicles. Based on, for example, home day, where we don't have many places to park. And to remove those parking spaces will be a, an issue or can be an issue. I know we're only dealing once in two seasons and, and such, but um, please be considerate of parking in general. Um, perhaps for special events, you may want to make um, without the exemption, that, that of, of, a gas tower vehicle may use that spot. Um, you know, for, for special events that a lot of people keep. Uh, secondly, is a personal request. Um, that I've noticed, having my issues here, um, we have only two handicap spaces here in front of the town hall. And I'd like a personal request that it be increased to three. When we have big meetings of the town camp, town council, or the room is full, uh, both those spots are filled and. It's uh really difficult, it'd be nice to have one extra handicap spot. And the third request, um although I'm a member of the board of education, I'm speaking as a member of the public here. Uh, I heard of, in the request um for um, for arbitration. That they want to compare our towns, I heard Middletown, I heard um, uh, what's the other one, um? Uh, we are not Middletown, I heard this at the W S P A or whatever, the other meeting, where they tried to compare us to Glastonbury, we are not Glastonbury. I don't believe that the towns that the, that ever be considered are necessarily representative of comparable communities. Um, I did research and I did post on social media, we in twenty twenty-five are the twentieth highest. Mill rate in the entire state of a hundred and sixty-nine communities, we're twentieth. For a town of only about fifteen thousand people. And so we need to be comparably compared to other towns of similar-ish, similar size. Don't have businesses and highways coming into town, so we cannot be compared to Middletown. We cannot be compared to, uh, I think it was Deep River, well, not Deep River, um. Uh, uh, um, Glastonbury, we can't, we have to be compared to comparable towns. And so if you were to, to, you know, vote against that budget, um, and if it goes to arbitration, we need to be properly represented. Uh, or confor- you know, co- you know, properly um compared to other, not the state, it's just because it's a higher state, yeah. Thank you.
We got it.
Yeah. Salem, maybe.
Anyone else who, sorry to make public comments, I'm one on one.
iPhone?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Rebecca Harvey again, thirty-nine Flanders Road, I just wanted to actually kind of echo what Sal was saying, because. Listening to these town meetings and having some things shot down a few times, I wanted to point out that the town's being used for comparison. Of the budgets and salaries is okay when it's coming from the superintendent, but when it's coming from the public, it's nor- normally shot down for being not comparable. Um, also with the E V charging, I had the same questions and comments about consideration with where those go. Just because of the library and, you know, the schools, what kind of voltage is being put out, we're putting these near our kids. Um, let's try and take that into consideration just while thinking about this. The village center also has standards for the appearance of buildings and should with the charging station as well. Um, another thing is kind of with the noise ordinance, I definitely echo everything that Ted said, especially about ATVs, lawnmowers. The, you know, all of that, and think that you guys reconsidering the verbiage of this is super important. Um, when it comes to wanting feedback, I am actually one that when I heard of this ordinance, reached out to the town council and Ms. Wanett got back to me. Um, I did offer input, which I was told could wait until a public hearing. Um, I also requested in writing that when something was done and ready, that this was, you know, sent over to me to look at, so I could start these open communications. And that kind of must have been forgotten or just not really taken into consideration, so. Um, when I'm hearing that public comment is wanted, when it's being offered and shot down, I don't think that's a fair statement. Um, lastly, as someone that has been targeted by Ms. Wanett's pettiness due to public comment made during one of these meetings. In my opinion, a public official that uses a public figure profile on social media to address the public. Should not be able to block residents, these are official statements that are being made by Mrs. Wanett, addressing only part of the town, not all, and all, and.
This does not conform with our bylaws and rules of operation.
One more online. Rick?
Yeah, there's just some uh confusion, if, uh, Rick Wanett, thirty-five, Long Tussle. Uh, there's just some confusion, if a W P C A expansion happened by a private developer. Um, how would that expense be distributed, if at all, to local residents? Along that expansion? That's the end of my uh question.
You'll get that. I don't think that's anything that could, would be answered tonight, we usually take comments, it's. Something we need to get information out to public, we'll bring it up in the future. And it's a W P C A, it's a W P C A in, in tissue.
Well, I think because the comment at the beginning asked that it would be affected up on the road. The clarification is, if it's done privately by the developer, does that still apply? Where, as Mr. Sephora also said earlier, residents would be required to attach the system upon failure.
What I was told, that is a property is that, uh, I was looking at property that required uh multiple telephone poles, and I was told that. I could lean properties on either side to the cost associated with it, because it did a betterment to their property, um, but. You know, they couldn't, it was just a lien, maybe, they weren't gonna pay anything until they, they sold, or if they wanted to, they could, but. When I was, I was, I was told to me, it was the cost associated with it, the adding the poles and the import.
I just think the W P C A should make that, you know, whatever they're moving forward, but, yeah.
Are there any other?
Rebecca Harvey again.
Is it, we have, we have a couple.
Yeah, it looks like there's two iPhones.
Oh, and there's one in person.
Yeah, I don't know.
iPhone?
Hi, I'm sorry, I was cut off, so I would just like to know who on the council cut me off?
The chairman.
Okay, and his name is, could you just clarify that for me?
It is Dean Markham, and you're not, you were not complying with the bylaws and rules of the town council.
Okay, would you be able to forward me those bylaws for review, please?
You can go right online, they're on the town's website.
And you know exactly what bylaw I'm not following? And you know exactly what by law I'm not following.
Yes, you're person, making personal comments about individuals.
No, I'm making a public statement regarding official, in a town official.
But it doesn't, it's not something that comes before us. And it's out of the jurisdiction of our bylaws.
Well, it does when the town council is discussing feedback from the residents upon topics. And when those residents are asking for things, they don't get them.
Doesn't.
Okay, well, I'll beg to differ with that one.
Are there any other hands raised?
Oh, he's still there. He took his hand down.
Yeah, Brian had a few, there it is.
Hi, how you doing? Uh, it's Alberto Cruz from two seventeen Clark Hill Road. I just got a question, um, because I missed a little bit of part of, a little bit about it, uh, something about change of wording. Uh, what did that pertain to about? Uh, what, did it pertain to the firehouse by any chance?
Yeah, yeah, I guess that's the only change of wording we had.
Okay, so i- is that, is that subject going to be brought up again? And it, what, what does the wording uh change? Per chance? I mean, does it, does it like change the whole ballgame?
Thanks to a lot of this items, the specifics within the resolution for the formation committee.
All right, and is that resolution on your website? Can I, can I reference it for a, for future reference?
It, it will be. It stopped right at this moment, I believe.
Okay, all right, that's all I had. All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Brian?
Hi, uh, Brian Turner again, forty-two Spice Hill Drive. Hey, um. Uh, I just want to say, I think it's, I think it's terrible that you censored a citizen who was giving constructive feedback about an elected official. Um, I think it's disgraceful. I really do. Um, and I think you owe her an apology. Um, I also wonder if there's any other feedback you may have received from members of the town that you haven't addressed tonight. Sure would be interesting to hear that. Thank you for your time and I hope you guys have a wonderful night.
Everyone's. Those public remarks. Turn to item fourteen, communications, correspondence and announcements. Ambulance association independent town. Have that in your package. I would just ask the chairman or the committee with that.
Oh.
Number about right. I mean, was that one?
Yeah, it's that, as a matter of fact, um, I did attend the ambulance association. Uh, board meeting, when was it, last week? And uh. I asked them to send the this year entry. So we have it. Uh, the results began through April thirtieth through April twenty twenty-five. This year, this past April. Um, in fact, yeah, it looks like it ended up, that year ended up pretty much. A little better, quite frankly, than where we were headed. Uh, so that was encouraging. Uh, but that being said, um, also they presented uh year-to-date financials. Uh, for their operations and uh they are doing uh significantly better. Than um, than what this might reflect on a monthly basis. So. Uh, we'll wait for the six-month report to come out. We got the three-month report, I think. A month ago or whatever. Take a look at the six-month report. Uh, they're uh, they're doing very well. Or at least in comparison. And uh, I think uh. I think they're on their way to, to really making, making a go of it with what we've got in the budget for them. I think uh, I think they'll do all right this year. Uh, we'll see. A lot of your life, I would say. I'm very encouraged.
That's it? Turn to item fifteen, the chairman. No more. May seconded, those in favor, aye.